Iron gate on one fence already, and we want to put up another iron gate on the other side of the street, and that will prevent cars from getting back there. I've talked to the fire chief about this. I've talked to the police about this. I would give them access to the keys, but that would stop the traffic in there until we can develop and finish out that new building that we're trying to acquire down there. And then if that goes through, then that might change the posture of how we're looking at the other land. But we've also been been in conversations over the years, two or three years with the mayor on another development up there. So that's kind of an update from me. I would welcome any questions that you might have and ask.
Thank you, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Anybody got questions, Bob?
Okay.
Seeing none? Okay. Thank you, Bob, very much. We appreciate it. Thanks for the update. I've got two others that are on condemnations, and we're going to do a public hearing for that in just a second, so we'll bring you guys up for that. And I think Doug, you want to talk after the meeting's over, at the end of the meeting? Is that when you're going to talk?
I've just got a short amount.
Okay. But let's do that at the end, because this is on legislation only, okay? And I think we've got Anthony Hints and Eric Turner are going to talk to Tom Wadley. Is that correct? Where are you guys? Is that right?
I'm sorry, he spoke with them.
They're good. Okay. All right. That is all of that. Let's go ahead and go into unfinished business.
Oh, 1990, Councilmember Baxter.
You've got to hold that, please.
Consent agenda.
Anybody want to pull a consent agenda out? How about a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Now they're here.
Yeah, they're here. I'm going to introduce them right now. The Gardiner Burton. Where's Gardiner? There's Gardiner. Gardiner was previously on the sign board, and he did such a wonderful job that we decided to move him up and so he could put up with Tom Brown over there at the Board of Adjustments. And so Gardiner, come on up. I think Diane's going to give you the oath. And then we'll also, you know, we're talking about younger people, and I've been concentrating on that forever. Harrison Dean, who was the director of the Memorial Hospital of Spring Hill for years and years and years, has retired and moved to northwest Arkansas. And so this young attorney, I'm very impressed with, has agreed to serve on the MEMS Board. And Joel Price. Joel, you want to come up? There's Joel. Thank you, Joel, in advance for your service. And Ms. Whitby, it's all yours.
It's going to be Gardner, or is it your name?
All right.
Gardner, Rachel, aye.
Aye, Gardner Burton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arkansas.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arkansas.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of North Little Rock Planning Commission Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
North Little Rock Planning Commission Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Of the City of North Little Rock, upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I, Joseph Price II.
I, Joseph Price II.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arkansas.
Constitution and laws of the state of Arkansas.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
The North Little Rock MEMS Board.
North Little Rock MEMS Board.
Upon which I'm about to.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys, very much. Gardiner, if Tom Brown gets out of line on that commission, you call me and let me know, okay? Joel, thank you very much.
What?
You just heard about Tom.
No.
Oh, yeah, we knew about it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's go into new business.
Okay. R. 19-150, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an option to purchase agreement for property at 2721 North Poplar Street with the Nancy Cochran Tippet Trust and the George Edward Cochran Trust.
Move for adoption.
On the motion.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R. 19-151, Mayor Smith.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call a public hearing right now on three different properties. Number one, Pershing Circle, 2910 East Broadway, and 1521 Orange Street. So with that, Bob's already had his time, and so I believe Steve on R. 19-152, Steve Owings?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Come right ahead and give me three minutes' worth of your best.
All right. I'm the attorney. I just got brought in on this case, just found out what's been going on. This is the problem because the insurance company is just simply not paying. Someone's got to make them pay, and I'll do that. I asked for more time. I'll call Code Enforcement tomorrow and talk to the people on the notice. I guess it's Laura Petty at Code Enforcement, and find out what needs to be done to secure the property while I harass the insurance company and try to get it paid and try to resolve and abate this this property. And I ask you to pass this till a later date so we can get a chance to get that done.
Do you know how long this has been going on as far as the insurance?
Yeah. The fire loss was in late December, and they initially came in, did an investigation. They didn't find any fault on the part of the owner. They paid a little bit of money, and then they quit communicating. They just quit. And they're a California company, and we got to, you know, we contacted the insurance commissioner to try to light a fire in her. It hadn't worked. Probably had to file a lawsuit to wake them up. And I don't know. But I can certainly keep Code Enforcement informed.
Okay. Thank you, counselor. We appreciate it. Okay, next is Mr. Turner. No, not Mr. Turner. Jermaine. And this is on R. 19-153, 1521 Orange Street.
Can you hear me?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Not really sure exactly how this is supposed to go, because this is my first time at a council meeting.
Sure, go ahead. You're fine.
But as far as regards to my property, 1521 Orange Street, it has taken a very long time to fix it. And one of the reasons, well, a few of the reasons is finance, of course. And another thing is faulty construction workers. I mean, contractors. I ran into a few of those, and it's also made it a little bit longer than I would have liked it to have been. But with that being said, I have passed my structural integrity so that I can close my walls. The walls are closed, painted. My electrical roof is also passed. My plumbing roof is also passed. My gassing roof is also passed. My walls are closed and covered. I had to wait. I also had to have a new roof, unfortunately, because of a storm. That's done now. And the only thing that the house needs, as of right now, paid the deposit for the final inspection for the electricity to be done. My contractor is renewing his permit so that that can be done.
I'm looking at some of these photographs from two weeks ago, three weeks ago. And so you've done all that work in the last three weeks?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay.
I have new walls, new floors.
Questions, Ms. Ross?
You purchased this property in 2014 after a fire in 2014?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's been five years now?
Yes, ma'am.
You've been working on it?
And that's what a little bit took so long, is because it was a fire, I had to actually reframe most of the entire house.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Anyone else here to speak on these three properties? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. You know, every one of these have got some sort of special issues with them. You know, I think on, go ahead and call 151.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located along Memorial Drive and Pershing Circle in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
I'll tell you what I want to do right there, I think, is I want to hold that legislation. And after y'all heard what Mr. Francis had to say, I think I'd like to talk to some of you and get some opinions on what you'd like to do and which way we think we need to head on this. You know, if we condemn the property, it's certainly going to put a blemish on the title of the property. We can certainly uncondemn it. So I'm not going to call that right now, so I'm going to hold that. The next one, 152. I haven't looked at this property. Are y'all prepared to call that now? Or do you want to hold it till another meeting?
Yeah.
You did say resolved. I think holding it would probably be appropriate.
Okay, counselor, work quickly, you know, because we're getting a lot of calls and everything else, and so we need to be able to explain to them what we're doing. Okay. R. 19-153, let's call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1521 Orange Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for the property owner to abate said nuisance.
Let me ask a question here. If, in fact, all these renovations have been made in the past two weeks, and we condemn this, what does that mean?
Well, under the resolution, the property owner, gosh, you know, is ordered to raise and remove the structure. I don't know how recently Code Enforcement has been out there, if it has been within the last two weeks.
Have you been out there, Tom, or your people been out there in the last two weeks?
These pictures are from '85, 2019, I believe that you were.
Yeah.
And I would ask if he's got building permits and had any inspections.
Have you had any inspections?
Can Tom come to the microphone?
No, sir.
So I couldn't confirm that any of this work has been done, he had any inspections.
Can Tom come to the microphone?
Go ahead, counsel.
So that'll be part of the record. Can Tom come up here and say that?
Yeah, Tom, come up and make this part of the record.
One thing that I noticed in reading the letter from Ms. Petty is that there hadn't been contact from the owner and that there weren't building permits. And you all can vote how you want, obviously. You all have the vote, but other properties that have been condemned to the property owner has been given a chance to come to my office and enter into a rehab agreement. If all that work has been done, then that would be a potential way for the owner to not lose the benefit of the improvements he has done. He would be required to put up a bond for the estimated cost of demolition in that case.
Tom, you want to just give us a summary of your sidebar conversation out there?
These were made, like I said, this month. There's some pictures from May. I believe this has been going on since 2014. The owner's been in court also over this property.
And his comment to you was?
That he hasn't had any inspections done yet, just a permit, but no final inspections or rough ends or anything.
Okay. All right. Let's call this.
Excuse me, I don't know if I may.
Yeah, you're out of order. I'm sorry.
I didn't.
Thank you.
He hasn't heard the pictures.
Go ahead. Have you already called it?
Already read it.
All right. How about a motion? Does anybody want to make a move on this one?
I'll move.
Got a motion? How about a second?
I'll say it.
All right, got a motion and a second. Let's call a roll.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes. Thank you very much. Sorry, you're going to have to get with our city attorney's office and work out an issue. You have 30 days to do that. Okay. Let's go to 154.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 900 North G Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
How about a motion?
So moved.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on the cleanup liens for 900 North G Street? 900 North G. Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R. 19-155, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 1014 North G Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Give me a motion.
Move for adoption.
Second. Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on 1014, the cleanup liens on 1014 North G Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R. 19-156, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second. Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on all of these liens, please come forward. Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R. 19-105?
Please call it.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of capital improvement revenue bonds, Series 2019A and taxable Series 2019B, authorizing a trust indenture securing the bonds, authorizing the sale of the bonds, and the execution of a bond purchase agreement, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto, declaring an emergency.
First reading.
Motion?
Motion to suspend all readings.
Second. Got a motion and a second to suspend all readings. Any discussion? On the motion.
You had raised hands, mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, I have lots of discussion. I mean, to me, this feels like something that DC, the federal government, would do. We're putting these two together when we know that there was a lot of opposition. You know, it wasn't unanimous or anything like that as far as putting the Justice Building, which we have all agreed on, in with the airport bond, the 4.9 whatever, million. And so at this time, I'd like to offer an amendment that we pull out anything pertaining to the Series 219B bonds that are pertaining to the airport bond and vote on these separately. And the only way to do that is pull this out and then bring back the 219B at a separate, I'll let the city attorney, is that correct, how we would do that?
It is, but this ordinance is not on the floor yet, because it's only been read one time. The pending motion is to suspend the readings, so I don't think that it's appropriate.
On the motion to suspend the readings, then we'll come back.
Okay.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes. Okay, I certainly heard what you said. The, you know, my argument to this is, right now, the bond market is probably as good as it's ever been. And if we rock along and try to do another amendment to separate these two, it's going to cost us an additional $30,000, period. $30,000, just to give some of us the opportunity to vote no, that is eventually going to pass. We've already agreed. There is a majority of us that says, this is a project. We're just trying to finish up the paperwork. And I don't think it's worth $30,000 to give some of us an opportunity to say that we voted against it, because it's going to pass. I don't think anybody that voted yes on this project is going to change their mind in the next three or four, five, six, eight weeks. But the bond market could change in four, five, or six, eight weeks. You know, right now, we're thinking it's going to be as low as it's ever been. If we wait and drag this thing out, then it could very well cost us, we know $30,000, and it could cost us a point, a half a point. Who knows what that might be? And I don't want to take that chance, because one way or another, if all the noes vote no again, you know, we're just going to delay the inevitable. So, you know, let it, read it into the record that you're against the airport, and go ahead and vote for the legislation so we can start the 30-day referendum and try to get this bond bid out at the end of September. Go ahead.
I know that in the past, and I don't remember when it was, it may have been over one of the tax issues or something, there was two separate items in there, and we did vote on those separately. So if we don't want to delay it for another day, then my amendment is to vote on these separately then. And I know it will probably pass, but I want my no, no on this. It was no the last time. It's still no this time. But I absolutely want to see the Justice Building completed. So, you know, this is in a difficult position for us. It's truly difficult, and I want our vote, I want it recorded. So if we can vote on it separately, I mean, is that possible?
This is the mayor's ordinance that he has sponsored, and he has sponsored it in the form that it is sponsored to include both the Series A and Series B bonds, one for the police and courts and one for the airport. And legally, there's just not a mechanism without amending his ordinance that he has sponsored to vote separately on the provisions in it. There's just not a way to do it.
Okay. Well, I still want to run, that is my amendment. My amendment is on the floor. So if I get a second, then we can vote on that.
Okay. We got a motion to amend, to divide these two, pay the additional $30,000, and wait another five months or five weeks.
Can we still talk?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Is your mic on?
Thank you. I would like to have the police and the courts bond separate from the restaurant. I'll agree to the airport renovations, because that's what we voted on the last time. But I'm concerned about this restaurant. I think that, I don't know their finances. Do we have a financial report on homers? We paid, what was it, $10,000? Did we get some kind of information from that $10,000 that said this is a good place to have a restaurant? What happens in 30 days if they sign a lease and it goes under? If it's connected in the bond with our police and courts building, how is that going to affect us? If they want to just step outside, and I don't know their finances, you know, if they want to just go away after 30 days, that's what I'm concerned about. So maybe we could agree to the airport renovations, but just not the restaurant. Take that $1,025,000 out of the picture and have a bond for that separate, as opposed to all of it.
Ms. Robinson?
I realize that this is mayor's legislation. And I understand that perfectly. I do not oppose the Justice Building, but I do oppose the airport. And I think what has happened, this maneuver, and that's what I call it, is put these two together so that we have to vote for it. And I got a problem with that. I'm for the Justice Building, for the record. I'm against the airport, and if we can pull the airport, I'll second the motion.
Ms. White?
Mayor, there's one thing you just said that doesn't represent my feelings about this, in that those of us who would vote no just want the opportunity to vote no. My reasoning is, the people that have contacted me from the community, and it's been a lot of people that I've spoken to, have said that they don't want the airport renovation to go forward because of the amount of money. And it's not just so my name will represent no. It's just that we've heard from people. I can't speak for the other council members, but I've, the majority of the people that I've heard from about the airport have been opposed to it.
Ms. Ross?
So we do have a second on the amendment and get to that. But I do have a question. On July the 22nd, when that was, you know, when the vote was five to four, when it did pass for these bonds, it was approved for 4.5 million, and now this bond is for 4.925 million. So what is the additional amount? Because we approved, it was approved up to the four and a half million. So how did this get from there to here?
It's fees and payments and all that stuff.
It is. The intent was to have 4.5 million for construction for the airport, just like for the police. 10 million was approved. In order to have those proceeds, there are costs of issuance. There are, there's a debt service reserve fund that has to be funded, and there's some rounding, and that accounts for the additional funds, so that the proceeds that are available to use for construction for both the projects are at the necessary amounts.
That's standard on all bonds. Ms. Robinson?
In the event that there is a tie, it's just normal procedures, right? The mayor can break the tie in the event there is a tie. All right.
Okay, we got a motion to amend, and we have a second. On the motion.
A motion to amend to separate the bond issues, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
No.
Harris?
No.
Height? I'm sorry, I'm looking at an old form. Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
No. Mayor votes no.
Okay. Motion failed.
All right, we're at a motion to suspend all readings. We hadn't voted on that.
Yeah, you have.
You have suspended all readings.
Have suspended all readings.
The ratings have been suspended.
Now you're ready for a motion to adopt.
Okay. How about a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And remember, we have to have a public hearing on this as well. Don't forget our public.
Now's as good a time as any. Have a public hearing. Anybody in the audience would like to talk about this bond issue is welcome to come to the microphone. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Ms. Ross?
Well, I just want to say, the no vote, wanting to vote on this, it's absolutely not so, oh, I can say, I said no, I didn't want this. It is because that is what our constituents that we have heard from, this is what they want. And we are their representative, and so we want to vote their vote, and that's what we're here, is to vote their vote. I'm not against improvements to the airport, absolutely not, but I still think it could be done in phases without spending a lot of bond, you know, the interest and a lot of extra money that I think is unnecessary. So I just wanted to voice that.
Thank you very much. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
No.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mayor votes yes.
On the emergency clause, Ross?
No.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
No.
Height?
Yes.
Concludes all business.
Okay, thank you very much. Public comments section. Doug McDowell?
My name is Doug McDowell and I represent Neighbors United for Levy, a neighborhood organization. We normally meet on the first Monday of the month. September, Monday's a holiday. There will be no Neighbors United for Levy meeting next Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Any city council members have anything for a public comment? Let me throw this out. I kind of was, I might, I was going to think about this for a couple of weeks, but I really kind of want y'all's input and really might as well get it out on the, on the street. I met this morning with Crystal at the Lehman Library. And they are struggling somewhat to, to stay within budget. I remember we had some issues, you know, three, four, five years ago, and we temporarily fixed them. And now with inflation and everything else, they're going to be running very short of money probably sometime next year. The downtown library branch has put a stronghold on them and the bond payments on the library is really what's keeping them backing up. I asked them that if they could shake loose of the downtown library branch and go back to just to having the branch at the Lehman Library, would they do it? And she said absolutely. So I told her to let me work on it. And I've already made a few phone calls today to see if, if there was some interest from private, in people taking it and developing it. And then Danny and I, Chief Bradley and I, did a little brainstorming on if there was an opportunity for the city to use that building and take it out from underneath the library. So there's no decisions have been made. It was literally this morning at 10 o'clock when I had that meeting. So I wanted to get it out to the public. I wanted all of y'all to know about it, that we're looking for options on what we can do. And at some point in time, we're going to have to partner with the library if we don't find other uses for it. So it's out on, it's out on the street now, so let's do some serious talking about it and see if we can come up with some really great ideas. Ms. Ross?
We know right offhand what that bond is?
Yes.
What it's cost from a year?
About 2.4 million is the, is the balance on it. We're not sure, we're researching to see what the interest rate is. You know, if we refinanced it, let's say it's at four or five and we can refinance it at three, it'd save us a little money, but it's still going to just push the problem on down the road. So 2.4 million, is that right, Danny, is that close? 2.4. And it is, it is old enough now that we can pay it off if we were to sell it.
Did they have an operational expense breakdown for that?
Yes.
That we could see also?
The note itself, $400,000. And then the expense is about 10% of their total budget for the downtown. And that's about $300,000, so it's $700,000 a year.
Keep the doors open.
But, you know, let me say one thing, and Crystal's getting me some of these numbers, that, you know, we think how busy the senior center is, it's 750 people a day. The library sees almost twice that many. There's 1,200, 1,500 people a day going in and out of the library.
Into the downtown?
Down, well, no, the Lehman Library.
But what does the downtown get?
I hadn't seen that number, but we'll get it. But it's, it's being used, it's just, you know, for the amount of money, it's probably maybe not worth it. Yeah.
Is there any chance something could be done, I don't know how to use it, like a mixed-use situation where something could go in there and, in that library, and it could still function as a library but have some other paying businesses in that position?
Maybe.
Is that was ever?
Maybe. They're, they're a little understaffed right now. They're too short, too full-time part and too part-time. So, but, you know, I'm not avoiding your questions, I just don't know all the answers. But we're working on it. Amber was in the meeting today and she's working on some of the numbers. Crystal's working on some numbers for us. And, you know, our economic development people are at a conference in Fort Smith, as is our chamber director at the same conference. So when they get back in town, we're going to huddle up and try to do some brainstorming. And I'm also going to talk to Chris Kent with the downtown council, see what they think. I've got some ideas that we could run up the flagpole. Let's just, you know, mess with it for the next 60 days and see if, give us some options. I think what would be my job is to bring options. How about a motion?[1753.28]